First up on our first item we'll take up is an application for CNCP. For Safe Day Transport LLC. And Detective, you want to give us a report on the status of that application?
Yes, sir, President. Safe Day Transport LLC. Courtney Craig, she has met all the requirements. She is applying for a low-speed vehicle. So she's met all the qualifications to move forward.
Okay, thank you. See, the owner is here with us. If you would like to, you can step up to the lecture and tell us about what you're doing.
Thank you, President Quinn and Detective Campbell. Again, my name is Courtney Craig. I'm the founder of Safe Day Transport. We are a downtown shuttle service on electric golf carts, street legal golf carts. But we're more than just a shuttle service, right? Our goal is to make sure we connect urban mobility and lessen the barriers of parking and just different infrastructure barriers to make sure we can connect the downtown area for people to have fun, to enjoy all of Birmingham in a safe and reliable manner on the golf carts and just make sure they stay in Birmingham.
What's the footprint you guys intend to operate in?
Only on the the north and south. So we only go up to I want to say where Hattie B's is located on that main street, that main corridor.
Okay.
And we go north route Legacy Arena, right? So right next to Legacy Arena to that side on the south side.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So primarily in the sort of city center?
Entertainment, yes, sir. Entertainment districts primarily in the downtown city areas.
Okay. Awesome. So yeah, pretty straightforward and you've met all the requirements. So since Council of Woods is not here, I'll just advance this with a recommendation from the Chair of the Committee. And it'll be before the Council probably in two weeks.
Perfect. Thank you, President Quinn. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Next up, we have a application from the Pull Up Birmingham LLC. This is a application for limousine and pre-arranged for executive sedan, so on and so forth. So Detective, you want to give us a report on the status of that application?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Pull Up Birmingham LLC, Ernest Robinson, they met all the requirements to move forward, applying for a limousine pre-arranged.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, you want to tell us a little bit about what your service you're providing?
Hello to the Council. Yes, the Pull Up LLC, we're basically a party bus mobile experience for downtown and actually for, we do weddings, bachelor parties, bachelor red parties, et cetera. And that's, you know, that's the gist of what we'll be doing.
Okay. Is this the actual, I think there's a some branded vehicles around town that say the party bus maybe? I don't know. I know it's a thing. I don't know if that's the one I've seen as your particular thing, but yeah, I know this is a thing. So yeah, have you guys been operating previously or?
No, we haven't started operating as of yet. And so, you know, we're just waiting to get everything in order and then we'll be able to start being mobile.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what kind of vehicle will you guys be using?
We have a shuttle bus. It's actually a shuttle bus and it's a
It's like a cutaway fifteen plus passenger or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, not like a old converted school bus. That's the ones that I've seen around. So
No, it's actually, it's a shuttle bus. It's already, the inside has already been converted.
Okay.
So we have, you know, actual couches and, you know, just totally trying to be a total different mobile experience.
You got the multicolor LED lights on the inside there?
Flashing, yes, yes.
All right. Yeah. It's, it's, it's a party bus. They say you gotta have, you gotta have the colored lights. So, well, cool. Okay, so everything appears to be in order. And so like the previous applicant will advance this to the full Council for consideration with a recommendation from the Chair. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, no problem. So, yeah, and it'll be, you know, probably, it won't be on the Council agenda tomorrow. It'll be a couple of weeks. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have Colin Alexander, who's going to give us brief presentation on the Local Road Safety Initiative Program Grant Application.
Good afternoon. My name is Colin Alexander and I serve as Program Manager with the Birmingham Department of Transportation. And we are applying for an FY twenty-six Local Road Safety Initiative Grant from ALDOT to build a guard rail at the intersection of Winona Road and Twenty Second Street Southwest. So this has been a long-term issue we've been trying to address. If you recall, we were actually awarded an LRSI grant in twenty twenty-one or two for this project. And after we were awarded, before we accepted the funds, we realized that the scope that we had originally submitted was not, we needed a whole lot more money to actually do what was needed. So we ended up declining that award and going back and doing more detailed designs to resubmit for the same program. We submitted last year for the larger scope, we were not awarded the grant. We asked for the the required ninety-ten split last year. And as best we can tell, the reason that, part of the reason we weren't awarded is that we were just asking too much grant money relative to the pot of money that's available. So what we're doing is we're resubmitting that same application, but instead of asking for a ninety-ten split, we're going to go fifty-fifty. We're going to ask for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in local funds. We think that'll make us more competitive, both in terms of the pot of money, but also if you read the documents, it says that applications that exceed the ninety, the ten percent local match will be considered more favorably. So we'll think we'll have a better opportunity of being successful in this round.
So this is the intersection of Winona Road and Twenty Second Street? Twenty Second Street, okay.
It's a pretty steep slope with not a very wide shoulder. So it's a very complicated location to install a guard rail.
Right. This is the road that goes over the mountain by South by Red Mountain Park?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So this is our second attempt?
With the, with the revised scope, this is our second attempt at applying for this pot of money.
Okay. And the assume that there's a history of crash, crashes occurring at this location?
We've had some crashes there. A lot of them are more just near miss instances. But it's, it's still a dangerous situation that we need to address.
Okay. Council of Woods, you got any questions about this?
Not on this, but I do have something to call before you go.
Okay. So previously, we're, we're trying the eighty, typical eighty-twenty match?
It's technically for this program, it's a ninety-ten. So we had asked originally one point three million with a ten percent match. And this time we're asking for seven hundred and fifty thousand and matching it with seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, so it's a fifty-fifty?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. And have you guys, there's not a recommended funding source on the submission sheet?
So our recommended funding source is the Rebuild Alabama Gas Tax Account.
Remind me, what do we typically get annually from that revenue source?
Around one to one point five million a year.
Okay. All right.
And if awarded, we'd be talking about the FY twenty-seven budget. It wouldn't be for this fiscal year.
Right, okay. All right. It'd be be helpful for, I'm sure the Council would be interested in knowing you know, some of the crash data from that location, you know, just for justification purposes. You know, if the Council approves this, those funds will be uncovered. So
Yeah, it's on Council for tomorrow. Let me go back and try to see how much I can pull, not only from this application round, but from the previous application rounds, both last year and in twenty twenty-one, just so you can get a full scope.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so I'm sure the Council would appreciate having that type of information.
Sure.
If you bring photographs as well?
I'm sorry?
Photographs as well, trying to
Yeah, I've, I've got some photographs that can show you sort of the, how there's not much of a, of a shoulder and it's a pretty steep decline off the roadway.
So you, you, did you say it was a ninety-ten match? What did you say the match was? Because it's not lining up.
Yeah, so for this program, it's a ninety-ten match. We, so we were, as I explained to Counselor Quinn, and I'll, I'll catch you back up on this, Counselor, is so we originally were awarded a, a funding for this location for about four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. And before we accepted the awards, we realized that the scope was going to be much more than that. So we decided to hold off, do a more thorough design and resubmit. When we did the design, the total project cost came to about one point five million dollars. And so last year, we applied for, asking one point three million with us providing the other ten percent, but we were not awarded. And as best that we can tell, because there's only five million dollars in this pot distributed statewide, is that we were asking too much of that money in one round. So we're coming back and asking for a fifty-fifty split in order to try to move this project forward. We think it'd be more competitive on this round.
Yeah, I need, I need to understand the scope of the problem and this emergent nature of it.
Yeah. I think that's going to be a pretty, I mean, you know, most of the Council's not going to be intimately familiar with this location and the history there. So, you know, we don't typically do fifty-fifty matches.
No, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so
To, to, totally understand. Yeah, we, we can definitely put together that narrative.
Okay. All right.
And just, just for context, for that, so the deadline to apply for the grant is the twenty-fifth of this month. So it's next, it's a week from Friday. So it is a tight window, just in terms of moving forward with applying on this round, just for full disclosure.
So Counselor Woods, do you need additional information before we move forward with a recommendation from the Committee? Or do we want to advance it without a recommendation or?
Yeah, we can definitely move it without a recommendation at minimum. And so for just clarity, you're saying we, we turned down the four hundred thousand dollars?
We did in twenty twenty-one. And the reason being is that the scope that we were awarded, we didn't have the budget to cover the overage of that at the time. And so the idea was is that we should come back and have, and redesign it and get really good detailed designs, which we paid for. We've already had the designs move forward and that's what we resubmitted in twenty twenty-four.
But the goal of that request and this request is the same.
It's the same request as what we submitted last year. The only difference is the dollar amount, because the only thing that, based off of the best we can tell, the only reason that we were not, part of the reason we were not awarded is that we were asking a significant chunk of a very limited budget that's distributed statewide.
No, no, I'm talking about twenty twenty.
So, oh, no, this, the twenty twenty-four scope was, was much larger than the twenty twenty scope.
Right. I'm saying why, what are, what's the reason you couldn't execute that scope?
So I'll be honest, some of that detail predates me. So I'm not entirely sure as, as to the reasoning why that was you know, entirely why that was decided to pass on that funding. I know a lot of it had to do with drainage and a lot of it had to do with making sure we had I think we need a retaining wall in place because of how steep that slope is and how close it is to the roadway. And there was going to be some roadway realignment as well.
Yeah, I guess the underlying point is, it sounds like an opportunity to possibly build some foundational work that we could be adding on at this point. Because I don't know that, and I guess y'all aren't in a position to have to tell us, but I don't, I don't recall being notified that we're turning down a grant money.
Yeah, this, that decision was before I got into, into this position. So I, I took it.
You've been around a lot of times.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, sure.
Yeah, yeah, we will only get notification when they're actually accepting funds. We don't get notification when they're turning down funds. So
But I know a lot of it had to do with the, the concern that there was a big enough need that we didn't want to get too far down, putting too mu, too much local dollars into that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a questionable thing, but we can move it to full Council to have that conversation on Tuesday. So I'll move that we send this to full Council without a recommendation.
Okay, I'll second that. Hall and Paper say aye, aye. All right. So that'll go to the full Council without a recommendation.
Thank you.
All right. Now to our favorite part of this meeting is to talk about other stuff. So Colin, you want to tell us about, and then we'll come with our questions.
Sure. So not a whole lot to update you on. We are going to be beginning construction in the next couple of weeks on our citywide patching contract. So that should start towards the end of this month, as well as the World Games Phase Two ADA improvements. This was a project that was on the books previously that we're finally getting to, where we're adding ADA curb ramps at what used to be World Games venue sites.
So before you go too deep into that, when you're talking about citywide patching, you're talking about permanent patches?
That's correct.
We, the city of Birmingham, all the work staff does all of our temporary
And this is, this is our lar, they're not just temporary patches. DPW will do some smaller patches, but this is like large patches.
Okay.
I'm sorry? I don't believe Edwards Lake is on there. I know that there's a Spring Lake cluster, but
There's a, there's a list?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
There is a, a list of locations. I can, I can work on that, get that for you.
So talk, talk to us about the circumstances under which the city would have to contract for a, a permanent patch? Because most of these permanent patches are in locations, well, many of them, I shouldn't say most, but many of them are as a result of street excavations?
Some of them are, some of them are places where you have utility failures, maybe not necessarily a, an excavation itself.
Right.
And where they impact a portion of a road where you don't need to spend the money to repave the entire road. But you have a section that is really beyond the capacity of, of our DPW crews, but we don't want to repave that entire road.
Right. So when you're talking about a utility failure, you would be specifically referring to stormwater?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could have depressions along a sanitary line where the sanitary line itself is intact, but the road itself is, is depressed and needs to be addressed.
So in that circumstances, Jefferson County wouldn't be responsible?
Not, not if their, not if their line is not damaged.
Okay.
You, you see, so sometimes the road, the foundation of the roadway underneath may have depressed, but the line itself is not damaged.
Okay.
So there are other instances where you have you know, a, a series of older permanent patches that have been done, that have run their course, and we just need to repatch all of those. That's another example.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, there's many examples of permanent patches that have the underlying soil substructure has continued to subside. And so, yeah.
But, but the utility line, for instance, if it is tied to a utility, if the utility is not damaged.
Right.
Then we still have to maintain the roadway, but you don't need to spend the money repaving that entire road.
Gotcha.
So that's what this project aims to address.
Okay.
And, and sometimes also you'll have tree roots that cause issues in a roadway. And that's not a utility issue. It's not really a roadway, you know. It's not a paving issue in terms of repaving the street, but that specific location needs to be addressed. So things like that.
So do we have a estimate, estimated cost on that contract that's forthcoming?
That's a, I think, I gotta go back and look. It's under half a million.
Okay.
And that contract was, has already been through all of our bids process and our contract approval process. We're just about to start construction.
All right. All right. And so you were also talking about World Police and Power Games?
So these are improvements, ADA ramp improvements around some of those sports venues that have been used for World Games events in the past.
Okay.
So a lot of them are focusing up, especially around the BJCC, where we're just improving the, the curb ramp to make it ADA compliant.
Right.
But that one also is about to start construction.
What's the status of the street improvement project along Twenty Fourth Street? The, I think the city's if I'm remembering correctly, we, the Council approved an allocation of about two million dollars for street improvements along Twenty Fourth Street North in Druid Hills.
Is this adjacent to the
Amphitheater?
Amphitheater and all that. I believe that project is, is largely complete, but I'll have to come back and get an update from Capital Projects on that for you.
Okay. Talk to me about the, the Trainfoe project in Southwest.
So the Trainfoe project, right now, we are working through final documents to get the to get the transceivers and sensors powered from Alabama Power. So we should have those up and running in the next couple of weeks. And then we're working through looking at options of how we can potentially add cameras at those locations. So that's still being explored. But once we get power, we'll be able to start collecting data and start analyzing data.
Okay. I guess I should have leveraged that when we were talking about the contract with Alabama Power last week, but my mistake. Won't happen again. All right. Council of Woods, you got some issues you want to talk about?
Yeah, mainly one, the patching list. Definitely want to get that, but then
Yeah, I can share that.
Just the general list of, of speed cushions that are in process.
Okay.
Because like I said, at this point, we get requests and I think some of them are already in the, and some are in the system, but we don't really have any way of knowing once they go into the black box upstairs. So
Gotcha.
Anything on that. And then at a high level, when's the last time there's been a conversation around interstate lighting?
Interstate lighting is very much still an ongoing conversation. So we are working with ALDOT on designs right now for two sections of interstate lighting on I fifty-nine between the split at, at twenty to First Avenue North. And then at the split from I, I twenty, from the split to the Irondale jurisdiction. So they're working, we're working designs on that. We still haven't figured out a, a funding mechanism for constructing those yet, once they're designed. And we're still having an ongoing conversation about maintenance responsibilities around that.
Is that that five hundred thousand dollar pot that we have for design?
Yes. So those are, those are two of the four sections that are being designed with that five hundred thousand dollar pot.
Sounds like the geography changed a little bit. But yeah, if I can get those two lists before you bring your grant application up, appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what our path forward is just yet on, on interstate lighting, but there's a, there's a constant conversation between us and ALDOT.
Were we successful in getting our grant application for reconnecting our signal lights to our central command here in City Hall?
So we do have a grant that we were awarded, the, it's a carbon reduction grant to work on signal communication and timing. So we're working on setting that project up. We're in the process of getting that set up right now.
Okay, good. And just random things are coming on. So I'll ask you about another grant application. We also applied for a carbon reduction grant for Birmingham Port for replacement of our cranes out there.
So that was not a carbon reduction grant. That was a Merd Port Infrastructure Development Grant.
Yeah, to get changed.
Yeah. So I'm, we're only, we're not directly tied into those efforts, just sort of helping guide on the periphery. So I know it was submitted in April. I'm, I know they have not made announcements from the federal government on awardee's yet. I don't know when that's supposed to be announced. But I can definitely work with our partners at the port and get an update for you.
Yeah, okay. I'll ask about another one. Conversion of Yeah, okay, I'll ask about another one. Uh, conversion of Fourth Avenue North to Two Way, is the funding still in place for that?
I think we're gonna have to probably give you an update at that at a later time. We're still, we're still working through some issues on that.
Yeah.
Um, our design funds are, are in place and we're moving forward. Um, but I think we need to probably have a, a separate meeting to discuss that in the future.
Okay. Um. By the way, Council Woods, uh, Attorney King called me this morning, um, relative to the issue that we had on the council agenda last week that, uh, would it, we passed an ordinance that authorized the closure of Twentieth Avenue South in the Redmont Community. However, the property owner of the car wash that's being, uh, constructed was not provided notification, so, um, that'll be an addendum on the agenda tomorrow for us to actually rescind that, and we'll have to start over, uh, so. Just a heads up. Uh, and, uh, gird your loins for Counselor Abbott's fury. Yeah, so. Um. What else? How are we gonna move forward with our, um, you know, we have funding in the recently approved budget, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for, uh, traffic calming, and the intent is to use a portion of that funding to, um, get some outside assistance with traffic engineering for those to hear, to clear our backlog of three hundred plus locations that have, we have traffic calming requests for, um. Now that the budget has been approved, uh, is there an, an RFP or a bid process that's gonna be put in place to move that forward?
I would need to circle back with our traffic calming team and get an update for you to understand what their thinking is around that process.
Okay.
Can we request a presentation from them at the next committee meeting?
Yes.
If they exist.
Um. Also, on our agenda tomorrow, and we talked about this at the last, uh, committee meeting, um, but there's an item on the agenda to, uh, approve amendment of our existing ordinances re- um, related to, um, towing of vehicles, um, this is related to, you know, vehicles that have had multiple citations for parking violations that have gone unpaid. Um, that's item number eleven on the council agenda, so if you got three or more outstanding parking fines, I highly recommend that you get those taken care of, or else you may, um, find your vehicle over at Wild Wrecker, um, and it's a minimum charge of a hundred and sixty dollars, um, and they add, it gets higher every day that your vehicle's over there, so. And if you don't go get it within several days, um, they put it up for auction, so. For all you chronic parking violators that may be listening, uh, get your affairs in order. Last account that I had, there were over three million dollars in unpaid parking fines, so. Been a chronic issue. Anything else you wanna grill Colin about, Council Woods?
I don't think we've grilled him. We could. A few high-level questions, uh, no, but like I said, those two lists are important, I think, understanding where, uh, the patching is happening. Speed cushions. And, uh, if we've turned down any other grants that you know about.
Yeah. Um. All right. Well, I think that's all we got for you, Colin.
Thank you.
Any other business we didn't discuss, Council Woods? We, we did ha- have two applicants for CNPCs, uh, on the agenda. Um, the first one, Safe Day Transport is a, um, local electric transport application, and the other one was for a, um, basically executive service. Um, and I just, you know, uh, we can make an official recommendation from the committee on both of those, otherwise I will provide a recommendation from the chair, but, but if you wanna go ahead and vote on it, we can do that.
You already heard them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we can, uh, like I said, everybody looks like they had everything tight, but we can, if we wanna take them both together.
Yes.
Send both of these items to the full council with the recommendation to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. So those will go to the full council with a recommendation from the committee. And, uh, the only other issue we need to cover is approval of the minutes from the May twenty-seventh meeting.
I wasn't there, but I'm happy to provide motion, cause I don't have any issues. I don't have any issue, cause I wasn't there, but, um, I move approval of the May twenty-seventh meeting minutes.
Okay, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, and so those minutes are approved. And I'll make a motion that we adjourn. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.